Fledge of Allegiance. Mayor Paul Coles.
Mayor Dave Dillon.
Here.
Council members Ken Mueller.
Here.
Norris Johnson.
Here.
Lindsay Orson, here. Lori Game. Lori Game is absent.
I made a motion for the approval of the agenda.
How many motions?
Second.
Any additions or changes or corrections?
None.
All right, hearing none, all in favor, indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed. Agenda passes. Consent agenda, on the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from May 16, 2024, and June 4, 2024, special council meeting, and also the approval of the bills. Can I get a motion for that?
So move. A second.
Any changes or additions to that? Hearing none, all in favor indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Eye opposed, consent agenda passes. Open forum. If there's anybody here tonight that would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight. And also, I was supposed to remind you at the beginning to make sure you sign in tonight. I think everybody did, but please do that, thank you. Okay, nothing for open forum. Public hearing tonight. Requesting communications. Auditor's presentation of the audited financial statement. It's all yours.
Is that my spot?
Yes, please.
All right, so I passed out hard copies. The full audited financial statements is the large booklet. There's also the report to members of governance. But we're going to go through the presentation, which is the summarized version, which just kind of hits the high points from the other two documents. So you turn into the first page, the one that says "Presentation of the Audited Financial Statements." As in the past, I kind of like to walk through, just a reminder of what exactly is the audit process. So it should be on the page that says "Audit Process" and "Opinion" across the top. So basically, in a nutshell, an audit consists of us obtaining your financial records from throughout the past year. This consists of all of your data from in your accounting system, and then various supporting records. And we perform lots and lots of detailed testing and analytics over these transactions for the purpose of being able to express an opinion on the financial statements. So the opinion that we've given you this year is what's called an unmodified opinion. So that is a clean opinion, and that's what you're hoping to achieve. So in other words, we believe that your financial statements are accurate. The next page says "Required Communications." This just goes over some other additional items that were required to communicate to you each year as part of the audit process. So yes, you did obtain that clean opinion, but how did the audit go? You know, were there any unusual items that we saw during the audit process? Or did we have any difficulty getting the information we needed? If there was anything along those lines, this is where we would be telling you about it. As you can see, though, nothing along those lines was listed here. Everything went very smoothly. We were able to get the information that we needed, and we didn't see any unusual, unexplained transactions or anything like that. The next page, we go over internal controls and related items. As part of the audit, we don't just look at the numbers. We also look at the processes and procedures that are behind the numbers. And the three items that we have listed here on this page are kind of like the standard big three items that we tend to report for a city your size. So I'll just cover each one of these left to right. The first one is related to audit adjustments. So during the audit process, we do assist with various adjustments to get those numbers to where they need to be, so that we can give that clean opinion on the financial statements. So a lot of these are cash-to-accrual type adjustments, where we're helping to set up accounts payable balances or accounts receivable balances, maybe recording capital assets and the depreciation of those assets, taking things from that cash basis of accounting, where you mostly keep them during the year, to the full accrual basis of accounting that's in the financial statements. So that's the majority of what's driving the audit adjustments item there. In the middle, we have a lack of segregation of duties. So this is probably a familiar one. This is just saying that because of the size of your city and the number of staff that are involved with the accounting process, you're not able to segregate all the accounting functions to the extent that's considered ideal. So there's certain people who do have pretty pervasive access to the accounting system, and it's good to be aware of that and try to implement oversight wherever possible. And then on the right-hand side, financial statement preparation. This is just letting you know that we, as an outside party, did prepare these financial statements for you. And whenever there is somebody outside of the city or organization who's doing this function of preparing the financials, there's theoretically a heightened risk that there could be a missing disclosure or some sort of undetected error that would otherwise be caught if there was an internal CPA or something like that on staff. Moving on to the next page, Minnesota legal compliance. As part of the audit, the state gives us various checklists that cover all sorts of Minnesota statutes. So how did you go about contracting and bidding? Where do you keep your investments? You know, are they in appropriate types of securities? Any conflicts of interest? What kind of debt do you have, et cetera? We reviewed all these checklists, looked for areas where there could be noncompliance, but we didn't find any this year. So very clean from that perspective. With that, move into the numbers a little bit here. First page here is going to focus on the general fund. Really big picture, and most of these slides going forward are going to have a trend analysis here. So we have 2019 through 2023 on this page, and then the 2023 budget is also on the right-hand side. So really big picture for starters here. Revenues did exceed budgeted amounts in the general fund by about $132,000 for the year, and expenditures exceeded budgeted amounts as well by about $112,000. So overall, with transfers, that's the other sources down on the right-hand side, with transfers and all your revenues and expenditures, you had budgeted for a slight increase in your fund balance of about $600. You actually had an increase in your fund balance of about $51,000. The next couple pages break down those same revenues and expenditures into a little bit greater detail. The first page here focusing on revenues. You can see, still for the general fund, the vast majority of your revenues do come from intergovernmental revenues, which is state aids for the most part, and then taxes and assessments, of course. Both of these categories came in slightly under budget, but relatively close overall. Off to the right, the one item that I see that did fluctuate quite a bit from last year and was over budgeted quite a bit is under interest income, which really, that's more like your investment earnings for the year. Last year, just due to changes in interest rates and the market, the fair value of your investments dropped off last year, and that's why you had an unrealized loss last year in 2022. And now in 2023, that swung back in the other direction, and you had a significant gain. Next page with the same layout, looking at expenditures. Overall, you're pretty close across the board on the budget to actual. Public safety over budgeted a bit, about $42,000. That looked like it was fairly evenly spread between police and fire and other costs there. And then on the right-hand side is where you had your larger budgetary difference, capital outlay, about $100,000 over budget for capital outlay. Like that was various equipment purchases, skate park expenditures, et cetera. The next page says "Unassigned Fund Balance as a Percentage of the Annual Budget" at the top. So this is a pretty commonly used ratio to kind of benchmark, how much fund balance do you have at the end of the year in your general fund? You know, that equity that you reserve in your general fund as a percentage of your annual budgeted expenditures. So you actually have a policy in place for this to be around five months of operating expenditures, which comes out to about 42%. And you can see you dropped off a little bit compared to the prior year, but you're still at about 68% for this ratio. So you're well in excess of your policy.
Does that drop-off a concern?
Um, not in particular. I mean, it's not a huge drop-off. You know, you did have an increase in your fund balance for the year. It's more the fact that the way this ratio works is that it's the fund balance as a percentage of your annual budget, and because you had more expenditures, then it just made the calculation drop off a little bit. So I wouldn't be surprised if it balances back a little bit next year. Next page. Now, this graph here is a little deceiving just because of the parameters. You can see on the left-hand side, it goes from 2.3 million down to 1.7 million. So it looks like your cash balance here dropped off quite a bit the past couple years, but really, it's not that significant of a change. A decrease here of about $117,000 for the year, just in your cash, which can jump around a little bit from year to year, just based on the timing of payments to contractors, et cetera. But you did have about 1.75 million in cash at the end of the year in the general fund. All right. With that finished, we'll move on to some of the other funds here. Here we have a quick slide that kind of covers from a high level some of your other more significant funds. These are considered major funds in the financial statements, so they're presented more towards the front of the reports. So aside from the general fund being major, you also have the debt service fund, and then the airport road project fund, which was a new one this year. Debt service, pretty typical activity here. You had revenues from taxes, and then your expenditures for debt, principal, and interest payments. Overall, a decrease in fund balance there of about $83,000 for the year. The airport road project fund, just the initial startup at the end of 2023 with the activity in that fund for that project. So you had expenditures for project expenses of about $138,000, and then matching revenues because you, at the end of the year, you were anticipating a reimbursement through the HUD grant for those expenses. So that basically broke even for the year as far as revenues versus expenses. Anticipating a lot more activity in 2024 when we see the books for that. And then the non-major funds, I'm not going to go through all of them individually, but there are various non-major funds you can see in the full financial statements. Page 65 is where those start. The next page, for those same three categories, shows the cash over the past five years. Just looking at each line, each trend line there individually, you can see your debt service fund has held fairly steady, but has been working its way down slightly over time, which I assume is in accordance with the plan for using those funds to pay off the debt as time goes on. Capital project funds, down about $130,000 there for the year, ending balance of about $424,000. And then your other governmental funds has held pretty steady over recent years, about $165,000 at the end of the year. Okay. Move on to your enterprise funds. So that does it for your governmental funds. Now we'll take a look at your water, sewer, and liquor funds coming up here. First slide is your water fund. The graph at the top focuses solely on operations. You have operating revenues in the green versus operating expenses. And if I just look at a comparison here to the prior year, 2023 compared to 2022, you can see operating revenues did drop off about $27,000 in the prior year, and operating expenses just about held even, just a very slight increase there. So overall, if you factor in the non-operating revenues, non-operating expenses, you did have a decrease in that position in the water fund here of about $26,000 or $25,000. Next page, same layout, looking at the sewer fund. Very consistent operations here compared to 2022 to 2023. Revenues down about $3,600, expenses down about $600. Overall, you did have a decrease in that position here of about $75,000 for the year. And then finally, your liquor fund, the last fund we'll take a look at here. Liquor fund, you did have a jump in your net sales this year. The amount there, the 808,000 that's shown, is your sales net of the cost of goods sold. That's up about $97,000 from the previous year, and your operating expenses are up about $17,000. So overall, you had operating income in your liquor fund of about $158,000. After your non-operating activity, including a $200,000 transfer out to the general fund, you had a decrease in that position of about $32,000. And just like with the other funds, the next page just showed the cash in each of these three funds over the past five years. Water fund did drop off a bit there, down to about $950,000. You had some project expenses that you paid for during the year that dropped that off a bit. And your sewer fund also decreased slightly, down to about $970,000 for an ending balance. And your liquor fund also decreased a bit due to that transfer out to the general fund, about $642,000 for a balance at the end of the year. Okay, so that does it for each one of your individual funds. The next couple pages here have everything kind of wrapped together, looking at the city as a whole, on the full accrual basis of accounting. First page here focuses on your overall assets for the entire city, and then the next page has the same layout but for your overall liabilities. See, overall, your assets did hold very steady on an aggregate basis. You had a bit of a decrease in your current assets as you had some payments for capital expenditures and using some of that cash in terms of getting into equipment and infrastructure and that sort of thing. But overall, just a slight decrease here in your assets. Now, if you compare that to the next page, where you have the same layout but for your debt, ignore that green bar entirely just for a minute. Pretend that green bar isn't on there, and you can see that the biggest change here is that your debt, the red bar, did decrease about $417,000 compared to the prior year. So you did have a fairly significant decrease in your liabilities, greater than the decrease that we saw in your assets on the previous page. Just as a reminder, the reason that I say ignore that green bar is because that is your net pension liability, and that is just a number that PARA gives us each year, and we put it in your financial statements. And basically, it's representative of your proportionate share of the statewide net pension liability, and you couldn't pay it off even if you had the cash and you wanted to make a payment. It just doesn't work that way. It's just a non-payer liability. Just continue to make your regular contributions through payroll. All right, and then I have just a couple final slides on here, just showing the future debt payments that are required each year. The first page here says governmental funds, future debt payments. These are, this is the debt that's being financed by taxes and assessments. So this, the graph isn't showing the balance of the debt each year. It's showing the amount of payment that's required each year. So you can see in 2024, between both the blue, the principal, and the interest in the red, your payment is at about $275,000. And then over time, the amount of your payment that's required each year drops off, and by 2037, based on the debt that was outstanding at the end of the year, your debt would be paid off, at least for the governmental activities debt. Now, the same layout is shown on the next page for your business-type activities, your water and sewer funds, and you can see that that would be paid off with your final payment happening in 2028. So a little bit of a quicker timeline there based on the debt that was outstanding at the end of the year. That's everything I have. Any questions?
Any questions? It was a very good presentation, thank you.
Yeah.
I think we're good.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you.
Like a motion to approve the budget? Or the audit, I should say, sorry.
Audit financials.
Make a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion on it? All in favor indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed. The audit passes. That included all three, right? Thank you very much. So we can move to ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 523, amending traffic code, Chapter 73, Section 73.22 and 73.27, regarding golf carts, first reading. I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Well, the changes were in red, right?
Yes.
Struck out anything? There's just a little bit there. That's your work, Damian?
Well, they, Dolores, did a good job of revising a lot of the language and making the changes. I just put it into a pre-looking format.
Okay. That's what's good about you. Any questions on that? Biggest change is the three years and the sticker, correct?
And the fee.
And the fee. Okay.
What was the fee prior?
There wasn't one.
Wasn't one, okay. All right, we got a motion, the second. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all in favor indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Eye opposed. First reading passes, ordinance 523. Ordinance 524, amending traffic code, Chapter 70, Section 70.11, mini trucks and UTVs, first reading. Basically, the same thing. Changes and whatever.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Anybody have questions on that one?
One question I have. What, how does this affect non-residents, non-city residents, if they come into town? Non-city residents, if they come into town? Do they need?
It's pretty much just for the locals that travel throughout the city.
That are here on a regular basis.
Most people that are traveling on their side-by-side, they're usually coming in to eat or have some gas for their vehicle, and then they're back out again. So they're not here all the time. For the people that are permanently here.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed. Ordinance 524 passes, first reading. Ordinance 525, adding motorized golf cart fee to Chapter 34. Sorry, I forgot this was a second. Make a motion for that.
So move. I'll second that.
Any questions on that? That's a three-year fee period, okay.
Yes.
All right. If no questions, all in favor indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed. Ordinance 525 passes. Ordinance 526, amending traffic code, Chapter 74, schedule B, motorized golf carts, restricted areas, first reading.
I'll make a motion.
I lost it, I hit the wrong button.
I think it's like page 118.
There I am. Is this new, or is this the change? Oh yeah, that was the change, okay. Yep, yep. Okay, just with a couple spots and stuff. Okay. Any other questions? Was all in favor of ordinance 526, indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed. It passes, first reading. Ordinance 527, amending Chapter 90, Recreation, Section 90.04G, Disturbing the Peace Conduct, first reading. And Damian, this is, if I can find it.
Follow from our conversation last week.
Yep.
Was the item on the agenda, and the question was raised as to whether or not it's more practical to have law enforcement be the, and the city manager be the ones to kind of make these preliminary determinations, and also bring in the compliance with state statutes for purposes of charging if they find it. So certainly, they can appeal to the city council if they get one and they want to appeal that, and that can be done, and there's a process set up for that. But this just kind of makes the change that you and Quinn had talked about last week.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions on that?
Need a motion?
Oh, did I get a motion, a second?
Not yet.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
A second.
Now, any questions? Otherwise, all in favor of ordinance 527, indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Eye opposed. Ordinance 527 passes. Ordinance 528, interim ordinance prohibiting acceptance or consideration of applications for new cannabis and cannab- cannabinoid, how do you say that? I heard it without my glasses on. Manufacturing and cultivation license, first reading.
I'll make a motion. Second.
And this is just to keep us ahead of the game here on this, right?
Yeah, we need to get some zoning in place and kind of wait until the state brings out all of their regulations.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor of ordinance 528, indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Eye opposed. Ordinance 528 passes. Resolution 2415, adopting the Drug and Alcohol Testing and Drug-Free Workplace Act policy for non-commercial drivers, non-DOT. A move for approval?
Second.
Anything on this, Tammy, that's different than what's on the ordinance?
No.
There will be a resolution, I think, later on.
Okay.
Yep, there will be a, on the second page.
Oh, yeah. All right. Did I get a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I did.
Norris and Lindsay.
Got me all flustered, Lindsay, now I can't remember if I did or not. All right, all in favor of Resolution 2415, indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Eye opposed. Resolution 2415 passes. Resolution 2416, resolution approving 2024 liquor, tobacco, THC license for QuickTrip.
I'll make a motion for approval.
One second.
Anybody have questions on this one? How come theirs is at this time? Because they added?
Added the THC.
Okay, that was the only thing. I was just wondering why normally those are earlier. Okay. If there's no other questions, all in favor of 2416, indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Eye opposed. 2416 passes. Resolution 2417, approving a public hearing for an interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a moratorium on the acceptance or consideration of applicants for new cannabis and cannab- cannabinoid, whatever it is, manufacturing and cultivation licensure. The public hearing will be Thursday, July 18th at 6:30. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion, approval. Second.
And this is to take the first step towards a moratorium, correct?
Yeah, we introduced the ordinance that the statute requires publicly be held before the moratorium can be finally enacted. So we can hear everything, everything goes according to plan, next was meeting, it can be enacted.
Okay. And there's a lot of discussion right now countywide on this and how everybody's going to address it.
Yeah, well, we have all of the city administrators, clerks, and myself will be meeting with Don Hees up at the courthouse, July 23rd, and we're going to all sit down and talk about how your city's going to handle this.
So hopefully, we can all be on the same page and kind of have a plan together, and so the moratorium would just give us time to do that. And maybe there'd be some guidance from the state. Any other questions? All right. All in favor of Resolution 2417, indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Eye opposed. So 2417 passes. Reports of departments, boards, and commissions, city manager.
I don't have anything.
Police, I think is just the incident report, right?
I don't.
Gosh.
Quiet right now.
Yeah, we can skip all the way down to Jesse.
I don't have much either, just our tournament is July 13.
Full, I'm sure.
Coming up fast.
Full, looking for sponsors and donations.
Good. It's always a good day. Great, planning and zoning. New members?
Yep, we did the interviews with the individuals, and we also did have the planning commission members vote, and the vote came back with Mitchell Seemers and Jake Lepper.
So we would need action to approve that, yeah. So can I get a motion to accept those two guys?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any other questions on it? If not, all in favor indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Eye opposed. Okay. Mitch and Jake are on planning and zoning. Airport, nothing, no committee stuff. Finished business, skip down to 13A then. then memo of understanding in reference to resolution 2415.
And this memo of understanding is for the union?
And this will wrap up that contract then, right?
Yes, it will.
It's less than until they contact us and get a planning about something.
That could happen.
Make a motion on that. Move for approval.
One second.
Any other questions on that? This would be nice to have behind us, so. All in favor indicate with an "aye." Aye opposed. So 2415 passes. No miscellaneous, what am I missing here?
I don't think you missed anything.
Okay. Council comments then. Lindsay?
I've got nothing.
Norris?
I'm looking. Oh, I'm quiet today.
Well, everybody is. No comments about the carpet and the walls?
They really look nice on.
It does look nice.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm sorry you had to point it out to me.
I just had two things. One, a reminder that music in the park is Thursday night at 6:30 at Rec Park. Mary, can you remember the name of the band?
Soul, dance soul.
Okay.
So it's Latin dance music.
Okay, and there will be a food truck down there? Yep, so we encourage people to go to that. And then just for your information, July 1st, the design, represented from the design team and a couple other people will be here. They're going to meet. We're going to start here at 9 o'clock, and then they're going to spend the day here in Malacca. And we're going to go over how we're going to use this grant and what the project's going to be, how we're going to look at the bypass area, Highway 23, all that stuff. So they're going to spend the entire day kind of gathering information, talking to people, and kind of getting a feel for Malacca. So it'll be kind of fun. If you're here in the morning, stop in. You can say hi to them. Otherwise, we'll be out and about during the day. Hopefully, we can catch some of you guys. A big reason we got our, we were chosen is because of the community support that we have behind us for the project. So I'm going to try and get them to many few people as we can to show that, you know, it was actual support.
What time does it start?
We're going to meet here at 9:00, probably hang out here for half hour, an hour, just to kind of talk over things. And then we'll probably get out and check some things out around town. And then they're going to have lunch, and then probably come back here and kind of wrap up a little bit. I got EDC members that are going to stop in, or else we're going to stop their business, so. So it should be good. Mm-hmm, yep. And I'll try and get, if I get more information, I'll get it to Tammy, and she can get it to you guys, so. And that, that's all I have. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.